To get us to get us prepared for the meeting on the A 18th and on June the 3rd. The pub and this will be open to the public and we'll start pushing it out. But it's for us to really figure out our comprehensive economic development strategies. So then all of the partners at the regional, state, federal level, you know, we have our documents in in check for these grants. And I this document, I'll send it to you again, but the the big one and Eric jump in here when you're ready. Is filling out our strategic county project applications. And I sent out an email to all of you with Marla's wishlist, which aligns with all of you, but you know broadband, infrastructure for county land. I the dream project is a pad ready site. Recreational funding for additional trails in our area. Justice center is, I think, needs to be on this list. And I know from talking to Eric and Michael that traditionally hasn't been, but it will be able to put that on it this time. Schools. I think one that I just heard from the EDA rep and from O Edit is revolving loan funds for our small business owners and we've started that process. And on and on and on, but and those are the discussion points today and it's not there. One, we're not, those aren't in prioritization list. Let me clarify that. That's just kind of the throw them out there and get our application process started and then on May 18th and June 3rd, we'll have that discussion. And I know when Michael and Eric was here, the thing that I got excited about was that they, like everyone else in the state of Colorado, realized that broadband is a high, high priority. So I'm going to ask Eric to get off mute and they are looking at, hopefully, potentially hiring someone that that's their major focus and working with the providers in our region to make sure that broadband is in the middle mile, last mile, every mile of Lake County. And where they have even started thinking about how to fund this and using some of the federal funding that's coming down like 2%, 3%, maybe 4% from each county to support that. So then we can have a really good, robust process for broadband. I'm working with the Twin Lakes Partnership right now group down there. Kelly Sweeney and I are heads down with a couple broadband, more towers, not broadband for cell tower projects for a couple grants. So, but that would align with what Eric's vision is. I'm going to stop talking for a second and let Eric jump in here and Eric introduce yourself and kind of share a little bit more about what what the plan is.
Sure. My name's Eric Goodman. I'm the executive director at SCAD. I've been here about a year. And I'm from Illinois. And when I first got here, one of the things I did in the first month was review the strategic plans that had been done in broadband and SCAD is a very large region. We are 13 counties. And your cog is the the upper arc is one of four cogs that we have in the SCAD region. The other, there's a cog in Pueblo County that doesn't is sort of off to the side in what it does. But there were three broadband studies, the Upper Ark, the southeastern plains and the south central part of Colorado. The south central part was Los Animas and Werfino and rural Pueblo County. And the southeastern plains are the six southeastern plains and the upper arc in the SCAD region included Fremont, Custer, Chaffey and Lake. And I think Park, Park in the upper arc? I think that may be right. Anyway, so I was introduced to the fellows down in Custer County who we've been helping finalize a an EDA grant to build six towers and provide wireless connectivity for 80% of the addresses in Custer County would have broadband speeds of 100 meg up and down. So that's an ongoing process. And what we, what I discerned from this is that the planning process that was undertaken four years ago, with varying degrees of exceptions, they were sitting on shelves gathering dust. And the exceptions, a lot of the exceptions were in the upper arc and Chaffey and Custer County would actually use some of that, but by and large. And so we, I'd be, I've had discussions in the last nine months. Okay, what's the problem? Where says you, we've got great funding programs. This is pre pre pandemic. We've got programs. But in Custer County, we're relying on the work of four retired engineers or two retired engineers working full time, nearly full time for four years for no money. And they're still not quite over the line. What's the problem? And I talked to Teresa Ferguson at the Colorado Broadband Office. I've talked with internet service providers, particularly John Saunders at CCOM and some others. And what I come to conclusion was that there's not enough local capacity to do projects, that we don't have the technical people who are living in our communities. They're not on staff, they're volunteers. They're they're wading into a technical subject that is rife with politics and varying degrees of interest groups. The telecoms don't like to talk to the to the cable people, the cable people and the ISPs, you know, the wireless ISPs. There's a lot of that going on. And then most recently, I talked with Virgil Turner at Region 10. Region 10 is both, that's the DOLA designation for the state, but they are also an EDD under Economic Development Administration, just like SCAD is. And Virgil Turner is their broadband coordinator who's been in place for five years. And both he and John Saunders and Teresa Ferguson were saying to me, you need a broadband coordinator who's going to work at this full time, who has some technical knowledge, who has some political skills and some savvy, who can bring people together, who can do contracts. And look at what Region 10 has done. In the last five years, they have deployed almost 500 miles of fiber in the middle mile. And have created a sustainable organization where they are leasing out fiber. And they they've got redundancy, they've got capability. Montrose is pretty much fiber to the home with a gig of service. So we have a model. So our vision is to not is to not reinvent the wheel, but to duplicate it. And that is to take the experience of Region 10, aggregate our 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 region into a and have a broadband coordinator employed by SCAD who would act as the leader, the facilitator, the grant writer, the implementer. It's not enough to to make the plan or to plan the work. You've got to work the plan. And we propose to do that. And we've been, this idea has been percolating for four or five months. And we're in the process of preparing to write an EDA grant to to fund that. Because the ED is getting a bunch of money from ARP as well or from the of the Recovery Act. And then it occurred to us along the way that the municipalities in the SCAD region are going to get $110 million. Half of that here very soon. And today, by the way, is the the deadline for the Treasury Department to issue the regulations. So we're going to have some clarity by the, we should have some clarity by the end of the day. Unless they say we need more time, which is always possible. And that clarity may give additional questions. We don't know where where they're going to fall in a number of issues. But the idea, the Congress's idea was that this money being distributed to cities, counties and and county, cities, towns and counties would be extremely flexible. Well, we'll see how that works. So I'm actually pretty hopeful. What we put together and we penciled it out is we're we're putting together an ask for each of the counties to take one and a half percent of their ARPA funds and basically put it into this, what we call the the SOCO broadband project. And it would be used to hire a coordinator and have support for three years in conjunction. And that's not the only funding source. There's also DOLA and there's also EDA money. And there's probably foundation money as well. We're being introduced to the foundations this week. Hire a broadband coordinator, a full time grant writer. It would supplement a few of the SCAD salaries to allow us to legally write grants on your behalf. Because there's a rule that you can't use federal funds to write grants for federal funds. So at least some of our people, our people have got to be paid from some other sources. So one of the, in addition to broadband, one of the things that we are planning is to have a planning and grant writing boutique so that we can write grants on your behalf, not just for broadband, but for anything. And we're trying to, what we're trying to do is to be relevant and to be financially stable. So the ask that we are putting together is one and a half percent of the ARPA money. Plus, we would like you to not spend the last 10% of the ARPA money until we have completed an implementation plan. That's the other, besides the broadband coordinator, there's also DOLA money in there and EDA money to take those three strategic plans that are very high level and bring them down to 3,000 or 4,000 feet and basically do the pre-planning and the cost estimating for specific broadband plans. We put all all this money in a blender. Three years of support, we've got some grant writing ability. We've got an implementation block grant and we still got a million dollars left over to start the process of local match for specific projects. And we're asking you to not spend that last 10% of your ARPA money. Because when that implementation plan comes comes back, we're going to know the size of the elephant. And and how mu, how how far can we get? How far can we take this? If every county and the city of Pueblo were to hold back 10% until the study, we have the potential for another $10 million region wide that could be used. And if if the treasury gods are smile upon us and this money can be used for federal match, that could leverage another $50 million of of federal funds. So we have a plan. And we're working that plan. Part of it involves, I mentioned in passing, the city of Pueblo, basically asking the counties for one and a half percent. We are asking the city of Pueblo for 1% of their money. They have not traditionally been active in SCAD or in the region, but we have, we've met with the mayor last week. We said, you've got to be involved in this. Pueblo is the the hub of most of Southern Colorado's counties. You guys are a little bit out there in the tourism side of your, the I 70 court, you're the, as Marla and I talked to, you're sort of the stepchild of the of the tourism sector up there. And so we've asked them to contribute 1%. And they need, they need this as much as the rural counties do because they've got everybody knocking on the door with all sorts of plans and they need some help knowing whether they're getting taken to the cleaners or not. So that in a little bit of a rambling sort of way is what we are trying to do in broadband. We are trying to stake, put a stake in this and say SCAD will be responsible. SCAD will take ownership of this problem. And this is our plan to do that is to provide the the resources to bring this all together and catch up on the five years that we've lost to Region 10.
Eric, let me add something to that, too, that will help them understand some things. The USA Broadband Association and the Colorado Broadband Group has partnered and has federal regulation to really, and it's not, it's in, it's, it's, it's in the house right now. I'm really following it like crazy. But they're trying to put a cap or a rural area will have a limit on the the cost of broadband. And the great thing, too, is the the state's broadband group has a comprehensive map out there that through their GIS mapping system that we can see where our gaps are from our providers. But they hope to overlay that with another map with cost. So we will know the cost from our provider, our local providers. And the other thing that gets me really excited because I know it's not accurate is providers give us a speed up and down. And they share, you know, the speed of, you know, this is what it's going to be. And they're not accurate. And the the federal government and Eric's smirking, then the federal government is going to hold their feet to the fire that, you know, if you say your speed up and down is this, that's what it has to be for the citizen that that is buying that from them. So that, hopefully, because of the pandemic, this has put everything in catapult mode to figure this all out. And between our state broadband organization and and the USC, USA broadband, they're planning on getting this started here within, I'm thinking, the next couple of months. I set through webinars on a monthly basis with the USA broadband. And this is their highest priority is to find out the cost, make it affordable. And knowing what those speeds up and down are.
Questions and comments? If I don't know, I'd be proud to make something up.
Well, I I guess so, if I heard you write, Eric, the like that 10% ask across the region. And he said it was going to potentially generate 10 million from ARP funds. I was curious if you, I mean, do we have any kind of guess on sort of the total size of the project we're talking about? Like, I just don't have a good handle on how expensive deployment is. You know, and I not, before we get into like who's paying and what cost share there is, I'm just, I have no idea. Are we talking like 20 million or like a billion? Like, I don't even know the order of magnitude.
It's probably between those two. And I, I think one of the ways to think about this is there is no, there is no project. There are projects. And and some of them provide more benefit to more people, to fewer people. And some of them, and some of them are about creating redundancy, some of them about getting broadband there in the first place. We don't know the size of the elephant. We know some of the, some of the parts. We know that it costs $50,000 a mile to to deploy fiber. But if you already have a hole that's been dug and you're just putting the fiber in the conduit, it's more like $10,000 a mile. So we have, we have those little pieces. The the first order of business of the will be to do the implementation study that will actually assign price tags to some of this. So the 10% is not, and it's not a designation. It's merely, don't spend it yet, let's wait and see. But it is not, $10 million is not going to bring, make broadband ubiquitous in this region. But what it is, is a real good start on match money. And even the 1 million is that we'd have on the first ask. That's a nice, that's a nice start, too. But what it it does, it it allows us to to at least, well, let me put it this way. The 10% is a politically possible number. It is, is, what do you want to spend on broadband from your ARPA funds? Well, one and a half, 11 and a half percent. Okay, sounds close enough. So it's really more about what's politically possible and explainable to your constituents than a a number that is built off of of off of cost estimates.
Yeah, okay. That's fair.
That's the honest answer.
No, I
You don't even have to make it up, just tell the truth.
On it, that's, those are the best answers.
Well, and the, and Eric said this earlier, the study is dated now because, you know, we are all using, and I don't think, you know, we're in the middle of the pandemic now where we're we're having a discussion internally here about having hybrid meetings for the rest of our life. And I think that's the way it will be. So having that broadband piece is critical for the community. But I don't want broadband to be the highest priority that we think through with this, with our SEDS initiative. It could, it should, maybe should be. But, you know, we need to think about all those other things that we want to add when we have our our work session on May 18th and June 3rd. So going back and Eric jumping in here, going back to this document. You know, it's, it's important for us to, you know, think through everything that we want to have in our economic sectors.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in at this point. Michael is our senior planner and he's on a plane right now coming back from visiting his mom. And the SEDS is his responsibility. Now, let me say, say a couple of high level things about that. The SEDS is our opportunity every five years to plan our work. And the problem in the last five years for SCAD is the organization has has been in hibernation. And virtually, the only thing it did in the last five years, with the exception of a couple of years ago, was to do the SEDS and it didn't do a very good job of it. And it was not a working, it was not a document to be taken off the shelf and used. We're committed that this document is going to be the blueprint by which we we work the plan. And the importance of accurately doing the identifying your projects is when it comes time to apply for an EDA grant, we need to show some connection to the SEDS. But we're not, these are, this is not a project, a list of projects that are just for EDA grants. This is, this is the wishlist. And this is the where, you know, when we get worried about a grant coming down the pipe, we will go back to this document and say, okay, up in Lake County, they're looking, this grant may apply for something that they've got on their wishlist. And so we can reach out. So what we're trying to do is to take the better your feedback on this project, the more we can help you over the next five years. And Michael's my expert on describing. I've heard his speech enough time to tell you that he basically says each one of these projects that you have, we just want five minutes of your time to fill fill this out. And just give us a high level enough stuff so that we can, we can find it. And you don't need to do it. You can do it for broadband. And you you want to do what you know for broadband, but we actually see this implementation project is sort of the the SEDS of broadband. So we will be coming back around. Get the DOLA grant and we get the broadband coordinator. And we will do a process, a project process that is specifically for broadband.
That that's great background. Are there, are there any things that like just really aren't eligible? Like, like, like I'm thinking, you know, like, like sort of water and sewer is like a different entity than the county. You know, or is it, or is it just really like anything that remotely is sort of infrastructure or, okay, thank you?
There's, there's this, and then there's also a part of this for ownership. Who's the organization?
Okay.
Taking the lead on this? And what's that person's contact? So if you had a water, if you had a sewer district that was outside the city government, who who is, who is the person to contact for that project? So it's, if you don't have the enough, if there are people missing from the room to do this, you need to add them to the room. It's not just what the county government thinks is important. It's the city government. Even down Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. Yes, I, I scanned this form before, but hadn't absorbed all the categories.
Okay, you don't have anything to do.
So it doesn't have to be things that like sit primarily on the county budget even necessarily, like just any, hey, great, great, okay.
Thanks, Eric. I I do appreciate the plan and like leveraging and and that projection over five and and more years. I also wonder, though, too, I understand that this is, for lack of a better term, perhaps a catchall of a wishlist. But I wonder if in the past, that maybe has bitten us in the butt a little bit, having too much on on the list. And if we might have that conversation in May and June, kind of to narrow that list down so that we are all kind of on the same page of focusing priorities. I mean, the three, you know, housing, which has infrastructure elements and recreation, which have economic developments and broadband that also affect all, you know, those are three huge, huge projects with ancillary efforts and and work to be done over the next five years. And I guess I would just offer kind of a thought that I have that, you know, perhaps naming just those three would be enough.
This is your document and where your representative is, so however
Yeah, yeah. No, yeah. Sorry, Eric, go ahead.
There is a part, Marla, can you scroll? I don't know which direction. I'm looking for the the part that says where it's at in the process. Keep going down. Keep going. What's after that?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
I go up then, I missed it. There's a, there's a part of this that allows you to identify each project, program or policy. All it is at the top, current state of project stage, concept, planning, policy recommendation strategy. One of the ways you can indicate your priority is is where it's at in the stage. Something that's a concept is going to go lower on the part of this because it's got to be developed. So there is, there is that. The document doesn't have a place to prioritize by high priority, medium or low priority. But if if you want to add those types of notations or by what you submit, indicate those.
Yeah.
You can do that as well.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, I think. Well, and I also, you know, we wouldn't want to prohibit any kind of eligibility by not having something named, certainly, and who knows what kind of pots of funding might become available or partnerships, so.
Somewhere between list and rigid priorities is probably where you want to land.
And I do agree, Marla, that Justice Center is, yeah, that needs to, I think, be be on there explicitly.
Well, and we can do this offline, but having, we'll, we're going to start pushing out the dates, May 18th and June 3rd for these work sessions. So making sure that we invite the right people to the, to the dance and to the zoom. You know, this, so, yeah, and having you guys with that input with not just our nonprofits and and our government entities and and some of our business sector and our educational sector. We're just making sure that we find everybody that would like to participate in this process. And and Michael has promised that it's not like going to be an arduous, crazy, and Eric, both, you know, evening meeting of, you know, how we do this. The the pre-planning is this, this you know, evening meeting of, you know, how we do this. The, the pre-planning is this, this application form. Um, and then just kind of having our wishlist, we'll call it, um, teed up and then we'll take a deeper dive.
I want to give you a, a quick overview of where we're at in the process of, of broadband. The EDA money, EDA knows it's getting a, the technical term is boatload of money. Uh, from A, A, ARPA, but they have not issued their notice of funding opportunities. All the, in, within the agency, they call that, uh, no foes. So we don't, we don't have the no foes, but they're going to show up in a, in a week or two. They're going to say, okay, here's how you apply for this money. And that will determine the nature of our grant request for the broadband coordinator funding. Like when the last iteration of this was, we were wanting six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of EDA money. And Trent Thompson says, you know, that's a lot of money for, for us and we, we don't usually do planning grants that large. You may want to find some other sources. And that, that's where he left it two weeks ago. And then as he's sending me off on a treasure hunt to find other sources, he, he sends me an email back and says, you know what? We just don't know yet. Let's, some of the guidance we're hearing makes me think that you should just wait before you get too deep diving into that. Basically, I was reading that as there may be big enough grants to handle that. But we don't know what they are. But when, when the, when the no foes are released, we want to be in a position within thirty or forty-five days of submitting an application because there's going to be a, a pretty big demand. So that's from, so we are also in contact with, um, there are two different, uh, regional folks from DOLA signed to R. And we are in contact with them. We think we're going to submit the application, uh, through the county of Pueblo. Because, uh, we're not a cog. We don't technically qualify. We qualify for EDA funds, but not for, for DOLA funds. So we've got to figure that out. The, at, at the county level, we've been doing two things in parallel. One is talking to you guys individually. And the other is talking to the county of Pueblo and the city of Pueblo. Because we think that if they're in, uh, and this gets Jeff to maybe your implicit questions, where's the money coming from? Well, uh, ARPA money, uh, the county, Pueblo County is getting like, um, thirty-two million and the city's getting thirty-six. Or reversed, you start adding that up, out of that ten million dollars, if they got ten percent, that's almost seven million of it. So if we get them on board, then we think it's an easier ask for you guys because now we got the big dogs in the hunt. And part of getting the big dogs in the hunt would be that we would use the legal staff of the county government to craft a mutually agreeable resolution that could be used as a template for your jurisdiction. So we would, we would have a, here's our standard version of a resolution that authorizes to do this, this, this and this. And if it needs to be tweaked for your own purposes, but you won't have, you won't have to say, hey, SCED wants one and a half percent of our money and doesn't want us to spend another ten percent. Can you draft something? We will bring to you the, the vetted version of this that will come from us, from our staff working with county government, uh, the largest county government in the region. So it, you can pretty much bet it'll be overkill for what you would normally do. Uh, but that could come, um, you know, we, we're going to know today or the next day how flexible this is. And if the answer to that is it's real flexible, um, that's a plus. And we're going to have no foes from, um, uh, EDA here in a couple of weeks. So the process of, of getting, uh, letter support and resolutions, the way I explained it to Mayor Gradisar, it's not a three alarm fire, but it's a two alarm fire in terms of, of how quickly things will need to be responded to. Um, but that's where we're at now. So I'm thinking this is, is prob, do you meet monthly or how often do you guys meet?
Uh, we meet twice a month, regular meetings and, uh, and, oh, two work session, regular, work sessions regularly scheduled. But, uh, we often have special meetings, so I'm pretty flexible.
I think this is, this is going to be, uh, a June sort of thing. And, uh, and we apply for the DOLA money, there's sixty days, we get a review. You know, we get DOLA and EDA, we get that in place. Uh, we would be hoping to hire somebody by, uh, early fall and complete the, uh, the implementation study, uh, late fourth quarter, early first quarter of next year.
And Eric, are you and Marla then so key liaisons with that person to help uh, Lake County State engage and, um, really build on our capacity needs? Um, because I think, you know, as you kind of alluded to, as the, we're, you know, we're kind of in Northwest Cog on transport, but we're in Upper Ark on everything else. And it's, uh, it's a little, it can be tricky to kind of leverage that and keep your hands on the reins, especially just with physical proximity of where offices are located and, um, you know, having a presence.
Yeah, I've said that we're a mountain island up here between two, um, which is, but Kayla and I sat on SCED's board, so the answer is yes.
Yeah, we, our board is, um, in the smaller counties, there's, there's two representatives. One of them is usually a county commissioner and the other is usually from the ED community. Uh, Pueblo has, I think, five or six members, the city and county. And, uh, Fremont County has more than, more than two, um, based on population. But it would be through, uh, SCED, we would hire the broadband coordinator. And this is, this is not a cheap position. This is a six-figure. This is high five, low six numbers. And they would be the broadband coordinator. They would be, uh, responsible for, uh, they would be the day-to-day contacts, uh, with the counties. Uh, they would be working closely with, uh, Virgil Turner, I did not mention. Uh, he's Region Ten, but he also is contracted by DOLA to be a broadband technical assistance person for everything south of I seventy. And one of the comments in our first conversation was, we wondered when somebody from Southeast Colorado was going to reach out. So we hadn't heard much from you guys for a number of years. Uh, so yes, so it would be, and, and one of the key roles, if you're a SCED board member, would be the nature and the qualifications of the person that we would be hiring. Because that will be a, a key hire. And, uh, there will be a, a premium value on technical ability, but it's also, it's a planning position. It's a political, in the best sense of the word, position in terms of gathering support and bringing people together.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions for Eric or myself? Um, yeah, we've got multiple things going on here, but the important thing is, um, May eighteenth, getting our wishlist together. And then our follow-up meeting on June the third, um, we'll, we'll start put it, pushing it out and having some, um, information in the local paper and all the media outlets. And then also this broadband critical piece is something that we still have to keep chipping away at. And I, this model makes sense. It's working in other states and, and, and it's in the state of Colorado. So just wanted you to hear this model and kind of get you guys thinking about it. Um, questions for us at this point? Anything we're missing, Eric?
Yeah, the questions have been excellent. I guess I, uh, you guys have a reaction as, as, as electeds, does this sound like something that we can do?
I mean, my personal reaction is just, again, like, super appreciative of that long-range strategic leveraging and planning, um, that, uh, gives me a great amount of confidence to, um, invest, uh, in, in the effort. Um, I, I, I mean, again, like maybe offline, I wonder about Mammoth and Central Colorado Telecom and, and you know, what are actual infrastructure gaps? Um, uh, you know, what, what remains for the county? Um, even silly, you know, you mentioned holding the feet, uh, providers' feet to the fire on, on, uh, on speeds that they, they're promising or saying that they're providing. And, uh, I, I just had an experience that, uh, with our provider, um, speaking with somebody who said, you know, my, my, my neighbor got, uh, increased service or something. And then mine went kaputts. And I was like, how could you do this? Why does this happen all the time? And the guy on the phone said, uh, well, I'm looking at your, you know, your, um, whatever, the signals of, of the quality of your, your, uh, uh, internet. And it seems that over the last three months, it's been decreasing. And the signal's been weaker and weaker from, you know, the main line to your, I'm like, well, who, you know, what, like, thanks for letting me know. Um, and, and, uh, but the guy, I mean, he was great. And he was like, well, there is an app. Of course, you need broadband or some sort of service to access that. Um, but you can, you can, uh, monitor the level of your service apparently. And I was like, well, that's really great to know, you know, like, then everybody can have a little bit more responsibility of calling Spectrum or whoever and saying, you know, it seems like something's going up. Somebody needs to get out here. Because I get that they can't monitor, you know, hundreds and thousands of homes and service lines. But, um, even just like those simple things to educate customers on, it might, you know, to start to help improving, um, the, the understanding of the demand and the issues and, and, uh, service ultimately for folks, but, um.
Definitely a, a public education component of this. And, and one of the advantages, you know, Michael was certain, did his position with Prestibute and, and the city of Salida. Says from an elected point of view, the, the big advantage here is we'll print up a bunch of the business cards for the broadband coordinator. And when you get a call about broadband, uh, this is no longer your monkey. There's, there's somebody that can not, we're, we're not talking about the individual level of service issue, but somebody comes to you. You want to get this neighborhood covered. Okay, we need to talk to.
Right. Yeah, very good. Jeffrey, Kayla, any?
I just think, I think it's a really exciting opportunity for us, definitely. And I would be curious, um, to Sarah, just to learn about, um, any potential inequities we have in broadband availability um, in our community. And I don't know if that's something specifically that you would be able to address, um, with that broadband coordinator. But, um, maybe just how to, how to, how to figure that out. Because I think that's been, um, like a, a sticking point maybe, um, in terms of remote work and, and remote learning. So I'd just be curious what that looks like for our community.
I think part of the strategic, the implementation plan will get down to a gran, a little bit of a granular level. There is a broadband map that you can access and, and put in the coordinates and you can find out the level of service. And, um, it's kind of a depressing thing to do. Uh, because, you know, we've got this, this and this, the places where there are gaps and no service or substandard service. And it's only been in the last handful of years that the definition of broadband was increased to twenty-five meg. Up until a few years ago, it was ten. And Senator Bennett's got a piece of legislation, uh, in the hopper to redefine it at a hundred, hundred up, a hundred down as the standard for which we're, we're at least aiming for. And I think in the short run, that's in harder to reach areas, you, you want to get to a hundred meg up and down. And in areas that are, have some population density, the gold standard is fiber to the home. Uh, you know, gig up, gig down. And so I think that's, that's the North Star for the next half, half a dozen years is to try to get to that point.
Yeah, I mean, I think I had, I mean, um, agree with comments made before. I mean, it's nice to be part of a well-laid out professional plan that there's a staff person on point for, because, you know, we're not, we don't have that. Uh, you know, Sanlo County. And then I think, you know, in addition to the questions raised, I mean, it does, you know, I think my concern, yeah, is sort of like how, as a very large area, we're talking about here. And by the nature of it, we are sort of like the, I mean, Lake County is kind of like the last mile. Um, you know, so how do we make sure that we're not at the end of the list? Um, you know, and I can, I can totally see like when you look at, when you look at like, you have X, you have X dollars in, in your funding and you're trying to make the biggest bang for the buck. Like a small county that's hard to get to isn't, isn't the first thing you spend your money on. So, you know, just, you know, that blunt question of sort of like how the, how, how the implementation of the plan would work out in a way that, um, you know, we can stand in front of our taxpayers and, and say it's a good thing.
And, and I don't have hard and fast answers to that. I can tell you that there's a technical side of this, there's a political side of this. The political side of this is that the SCED board is, is represented by members from each county. And you, in terms of taxation, you have representation in, in, in terms of this. I think the other, the other side of this is, uh, we are very cognizant of the fact that, um, everybody has to get something out of it. To, this is more akin to a process of deciding which roads get paved and making sure that all four wards in the city are covered than it is a case of a technocrat sitting and saying, this is according to the most bang for the buck. This is where we're going to have it. I mean, the most bang for the buck is where we got into problems in the first place because the, the private sector has cherry picked all the places where the business case is easy. Now we're talking about where the business case is hard. And there are some places that have a deficient middle mile where there, there needs to be a, a fiber backbone going through, through the communities and up to the, making the connections. And there are other places where the problem is getting to the last mile and not having enough population to justify it. That last example is the Southeast Plains. Uh, CCOM has got great, a great fiber middle mile. But they can't make the business case to, to extend that. And in a remote area, uh, you're more likely to have a Custer County solution where you're building towers and you're, you're using wireless. You're pushing your fiber out as far as you can, uh, to connect. But that last mile may be wireless internet connection. And in places that are really remote, those folks may be getting internet by satellite. Uh, and, you know, there's some problems with that. There's latency problems and reliability problems. But, um, there's not a single solution. There's not a regional solution. There are only local solutions within a regional planning context.
Would that be, would that be something that you wouldn't look into then, like Colorado Central Telecom, right? Like with, with their microwave, um, capabilities and just understand kind of what the
Yes.
disadvantages to that?
The providers, the internet service providers would be the people working very closely with the, with the broadband coordinator. Uh, we've, uh, we're scheduled to reach out to, um, CC Telecom here in the next week. I've, I've dealt mainly with, uh, CCOM, but the, uh, C, uh, CCT purchased the assets in Custer County from, uh, from CCOM. So I need, I want to catch up with them on, on what they're doing and introduce them to the concept. And John Saunders from CCOM is arranging a meeting with their new CEO, uh, so that we can also go over. I'm supposed to talk to the, uh, the original CEO and introduce myself. And then we're going to have a more of a business meeting with their, their new guy. But yes, uh, Kayla, to answer your question, the, um, the internet service providers are part of the, uh, broadband coordinator's constituency. Is helping them, uh, get resources, uh, helping them play nice with each other in the sandbox and, and trying to work together to improve service. The, the, the biggest obstacle for ARPA money to be made flexible is coming from the telcos in the cable industry. Who are concerned that if we pour a bunch of money into broadband, it might work. And their business model will get disrupted. You know, because if, if you own a ca, if you own a cable company and your, your infrastructure is in COAX and now there's going to be a whole lot more money invested in broadband. you, you don't as easily see the opportunity as you see the threat. So some of the lobbying being done is that this ARPA money not be as flexible as we would like it to be. To be able to leverage it with other federal funds. When I, I got hired and I, I don't know if you know, if you've heard of Action 22, it's a lobbying entity for the 22 counties in Southern Colorado. And Sarah Blackhurst is the executive director. And I was telling her, I want to get involved in broadband, there's this, this, you know, it just went off in the five-minute rant that you've heard here. And she said, oh, you poor dear, you've been given the newbie portfolio. Everybody wants to get involved in broadband and then they find out what a snake pit it is. And I said, yeah, that's pretty much it. That's, that's what, so I've, I've been handed the newbie portfolio and I haven't given it back yet.
Any last minute questions for us? Thanks for your valuable time today, commissioners. I know you've got a plate full of things you're, you're working through. And I will resubmit that document to all of you and then we can start putting our lists together of folks to participate for these two meetings coming up on May 18th and June 3rd. Any last minute comments?
No, thank you so much.
I'll shut up. We've talked today about SCED being relevant in broadband. We are also working, I think you're having some separate discussions this week with Michael on housing, where we have some abilities that we're, we're trying to work that out. And we are also seeking to get back into the access to capital space in terms of revolving loans and equity, the availability of equity in the region for the tech sector. And the fourth thing that we're looking to do is, I mentioned in passing, is to be a grant writing and planning boutique. You can't afford the $100,000 planner, but we've got the $100,000 planner that we're going to pay 60 and we're going to rent him out for, for use here pretty soon.
Excellent. Thanks. We'll, we'll look forward to touching base with you tomorrow, offline, individually and Eric maybe as well. Thanks for the, the time and the overview.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thanks you too.